Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call to order the special call meeting of the KPPA Board for February the 7th, and we're gonna begin with a legal public statement.
Yes, sir. For the record, I want to note that this is a special meeting of the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute, Section 61.826. It may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road, Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. I ask if you are speaking and not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Ms. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Lane? Mr. O'Meara?
Here.
Ms. Pendegras?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
And Mr. Summers?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum, and the next up is the KPPA Ad hoc Executive Director Search Committee, and Bill O'Meara is with us.
Thank you, Chair. The, uh, before this meeting, um, the Subcommittee, uh, came before you and had a advertising, uh, posting process. Uh, we advertised in circulars, uh, made postings online, and had a really, um, strong response. We had 48 applicants that we received by the due date Jan- uh, January 15th. Uh, last week, the Subcommittee met, and saw that about 19, uh, did not meet, uh, the minimum threshold, uh, which lay, gave us, um, a smaller pool. And at this point, we need to come to the Board and ask for your approval on how to proceed, um, in the selection process. So after, uh, discussions, uh, the Committee is recommending, uh, that the Board delegate the authority to the Committee to review the applications and determine which candidates, um, to have interviews, conduct all the necessary interviews, and to make a recommendation on the candidate, uh, to the KPPA Board. Now, in that process, um, we will, uh, come up with, um, questions. Those will be correlated by the HR Department, making sure that, uh, they're all appropriate. Uh, we're proposing doing Zoom interviews with the first, uh, level of interviews, making sure that that's fair and equitable, whether it's local or an out of, out of locale candidate. And then decide whether, uh, to go with, uh, second interviews or possibly third interviews in order to come up with a candidate to bring before the Board. Um, this is, does not have to be the way we do it. This was what we wanted to come forward with at the station, and open that up for the, the Board for discussion.
Who's on this Committee again? I, I, I don't have, I've, I've, the Fed was giving to me, I for, I didn't, I don't have it.
It's, uh, Lynn Hampton and Keith Piercy from K-Board, myself and Betty Pendegras from the C-Board.
We don't have anybody of color on this Committee?
Uh, we do not.
How was this determined?
I believe it was, uh, at a meeting of the Board, uh, December the 6th, if the, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. William, we, the, um, it was the two Board Chairs, that's how we got Betty and Lynn, and then, uh, we wanted to keep the numbers even, so, um, I don't remember. I think I asked Bill, and then, uh, I actually was not gonna do it, and, uh, and then, uh, I think Pruitt said he would rather me do it than him, and so that's how I ended up on the Board, but I'm pretty sure you were in the meeting.
It was at the September 28th meeting, um, when the Committee was formed, and Mr. Summers, uh, was present. Uh, he's the one who made the motion.
Well, I just, I just think that when we're trying to hire, and when we're, we're doing things, I, I think it, I think we should try to make sure that it's diverse. That's just the way that I feel. I think in the environment that we're in, and in the environment that we have been in the past, I just think that that should be something that we intentionally do. But if we can't do it here, I mean, I, uh, but we, I, I think that should be what we should try to do. Cause I don't think that was always done in the past, and I want that to be something different as we move, you know, kinda in the future.
William, I know, I, 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 this, I'm debating on, on saying this, but since I feel like saying it. I know where my heart is, and I have a, uh, diverse daughter. Um, she's, uh, was born in the Congo, and, um, so I know where my heart is, and my heart is where you're saying is that I open my mind to, uh, you know, to people of color, women, men, people that don't have a, and a pronoun, um, and, um, so you will ha- I'm giving you confidence that that, I'm coming into this decision-making process with that. That's where my brain is.
Yeah, and then I don't, and I don't look, I have confidence in everybody that is there. I'm just saying, for people that is looking in, that could be something quickly that, where they could say, hey, you know, hey, things haven't changed from the past, things of that nature. So I'm just saying, we just have to be intentional about making sure that, you know, we look like the society that we're dealing with and that we're ultimately picking candidates from.
I also gonna say, I'm not sure you'd, when that, when we looked at the schedule we've got, I, I mentioned to, uh, Sherry that I think our meeting schedule's gonna bankrupt the company.
Yeah, man, my thing is, and my thing, I don't know who, I, I, my, my availability is slim. So I mean, like, it's like I said, I'm probably one of the busiest people here, so, I mean, I get it. I'm just saying that when we are being, look, man, we gonna be critiqued in everything that we do, and people are gonna come at us at different things, so I just think, look, I'm, it's my job to bring this up, so like I said, when this does come up, we can say we had a conversation, and we're comfortable with how we're, how we're moving forward, but I just want everybody on this call to know, look, man, when we are doing something like this, I want that to be part of the thinking process, and want us to make sure that we intentionally, you know, do our best to, 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 to do that, to look like the society that we are picking from.
Dr. Hackbart has his hand raised.
Uh, yes, Bill. Could you just review the relationship with HR and your Committee, and the process that you have to go through working with them as you evaluate the candidates and go through their formal appointment processes and so forth? That might be helpful.
Sure. Uh, well, first of all, I want to, uh, thank Lori for a tremendous amount of support that she has given the Committee and dedicated to, to cons- continue to serve the Committee. Uh, she was the, uh, vocal point for anyone who had questions about the application process, steering them to the information we had available, answering whatever questions she could, uh, taking those applications and putting them into a master spreadsheet. Um, she did not, uh, rank them, only to have a, a pause between those that she felt meant the, met, the minimum requirements and those that did not. Um, we've, uh, met with her in closed session and talked about that, uh, agreed with her evaluation. Um, we are proposing that she will be the person who reviews all questions, make sure that they meet, uh, standards, and that she will be involved in all of the interviews, uh, listening and, um, keeping us on track if we start to, uh, deviate. Have I left anything out?
Thank you.
I think that covers it. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we spoke of in our deliberations was to bring three candidates to the full Board, and the Board do full interviews with three, um, and then go from there. We were kind of split on that, but finally decided to go forward and say that, uh, the Committee would do second and possibly third interviews, whatever we felt was necessary in order to recommend one candidate for the whole Board to interview, uh, and, uh, for up or down, uh, decision. So, just to elaborate, that was a discussion, uh, in our, in our deliberations for the, for the recommendation today.
Was there a reason not to bring three candidates?
Well, it was a matter of, uh, the time, um, commitment from the entire Board. If the Board would like to have that, uh, participation, we're, we're more than happy to, to, uh, gear our interviews to come up with one, two, or three, uh, top candidates for the entire Board to deliberate on.
I, I think our, our goal here, and, and I can tell you that one of the things I was concerned about is, is just including too many people too early in the process, and really making things unwieldy. Just trying to get this narrowed down to where if the full Board wants to participate, you know, you're not participating on, on 10 or 15 interviews, which obviously would be a, 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 a large time demand on the entire Board, but also probably drag the interviews out to a, an uncomfortable, uh, length of time. So I think that's what we were looking to do, um, is, is just try to keep this process as concise as possible without asking for, um, you know, a lot of time from every single Board member.
It, if, if the Board would like to have, uh, more input, um, we can gear it that way. It, it's totally up to the Board on your, your wishes at this point.
Bill, I, I wonder, and Lori probably has to answer this, or Vicky, if, uh, if it's reasonable to provide the, uh, applications to the entire Board, and, or maybe a subset, maybe the ones that we're interviewing to the, to the whole Board, and possibly they know some of the candidates and can give us some information, or, um, provide questions or something like that. Is, would that be a possibility, and then that, hopefully that wouldn't take too much of their time?
It just seems to me that ineffective full Board is basically, we're being faced with an up or out, uh, decision, with, we only have one candidate to review that with your recommendation of, of the Committee. Uh, basically, the full Board would not be be involved in the process.
Certainly under-
Go ahead.
Well, I certainly understand your, your comments, and we can adjust accordingly if it, if the Board so chooses. Uh, Lori, did you have an answer for Ms. Hampton?
Yes, I was just gonna say, as far as providing the applications or the subset, um, there's no issue with that, if that's what's decided.
I, I would certainly, um, welcome the Board's comments. Uh, we'd be glad to, uh, furnish either all, some. Our, our, um, total pool that we felt was, uh, qualified. We could go with the ones that, uh, we are ready to go forward with first interviews. We'll want to make sure that, uh, we give you time to do that review is, is the, uh, if you want that feedback, if you want to give us that feedback.
Uh, Dr. Hackbart, what, what number would you be looking for? Do you have a number in mind?
Uh, not really a number, but I think traditionally Boards are involved to, to a greater extent in that. A, a suggestion, what if your top three, uh, candidates, their fetas, uh, resumes would be distributed to the full Board for their comment before you come back and deliberate to produce one recommendation? I, I think that would be one way to, uh, make it relatively efficient, but also, uh, ensure the Board is a, a good background when they, uh, process your recommendation.
I would certainly, uh, be glad to do that.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, so the, the Committee would, would basically, uh, conduct these interviews as the recommendation was, and then we would bring three names and let the full Board look at the, uh, the resumes of all three of those people. Was that, is that the suggestion?
As, in fact, a Board member may have some information about one of the candidates that would be useful to you as, in the Committee.
Right.
And it would be, that would be, yeah, that's sort of the idea.
Okay.
Um, Bill, Keith, and, and Merrill, uh, would you want to, and maybe just put this, if needed, have a special meeting in closed session where we could talk about the three candidates? Would that, would that help anything, or would that be not necessary?
That would be fine, uh, sure, or just distributing, getting some input from the Board, and I think maybe the Committee might feel more comfortable that they've had that kind of observation as part of your process.
It would be fine with me.
Me too.
Yeah.
Then, then I would-
That was the pro- oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
No, go ahead, please.
Uh, that was the process we used when we, uh, hired Mr. Owens. Uh, I, we narrowed it down to three candidates, uh, and they, we actually had a, uh, a, uh, CRS Committee, or not a Committee, but a CRS Board meeting, and all the candidates could be appeared by Zoom. So if the Board had any questions, they could ask them directly. So, but I just wanna throw out what we did for, on the seaside. We just, the Committee narrowed it down to a manageable number, and that's the case, we decided it was free, and then the Board could ha- have that opportunity.
Ms. Pendegras, is your hand up?
Uh, and I would agree with, uh, Jerry, that process worked very well for us. Um, it, uh, Keith was a little concerned about having, uh, eight people interview one person at a, at a time, but it, uh, it went very smoothly when we did that format for, um, uh, the CRS, uh, CEO hire. So if, I, I think having a Board meeting where, um, we were all together and discussing the last three candidates, uh, in closed session, I think, um, might be a good way to, uh, document the Board's discussions.
So, so I'm hearing three, uh, I mean, excuse me, two different approaches, um, that the Board is considering, and that is, one, that the Subcommittee do necessary interviews to come up with a final three candidates, and then, uh, furnish those, uh, resumes to the Board, and have a meeting to discuss, uh, the three candidates with the Board, uh, before a final, uh, decision, uh, recommendation is made before the Board for interview. The other option I'm hearing is that, uh, the Subcommittee come up with a number of interviews to determine the three top candidates, and then the Board interview all three top candidates. So I'm hearing those, those two being discussed right now. Is that correct? Do you, do you want to, um, you, do you want to, um, make a choice of those two amendments? Anyone want to, um, make a motion to make those adjustments to the process?
What, how do you feel? Which do you feel, uh, more comfortable with, having a motion, or just, uh, discussing which, uh, process, uh, would affect it, or be most effective?
I, I think a, a discussion is fine at this point, and then we'll have a final, uh, motion to, to give the Committee whatever, um, delegated authority, uh, you wish to, to convey on.
Bill?
Yes.
I'd like to say that I wanna hear basically from Jerry, William, and Merrill, and Pruitt, if he were here. Uh, I'm comfortable with the process, as, as Betty was just saying, and as I said, but those three, you three are the ones that are gonna be basically trusting our opinion, and if you feel like that you want to be into it, I think I'd like to hear more from you all.
Here, here's what, the, the 29 candidates that we have, uh, I think that the resume is gonna be sent out, which is good. And then, you know, as you, I would like to have a meeting to see how you, how you, uh, selected the three. Uh, and then, you know, after that, I'm comfortable with interviewing or having you, us choose, choose from based upon your recommendation. I, I don't, I don't know, but I, I think that I definitely would like to have the conversation so I could have, uh, questions that I may wanna ask to how we narrowed it down from the 29 to the three. I wanna understand that and make sure that that process was fair, equitable, and, and, and hopefully we, we have diverse candidates.
I think for a position of this importance, it is not too much to ask of potential candidates that, that you interviewed the, the top three, uh, pretty aggressively and, uh, fully. And I think when the selection is ultimately made, I think that candidate actually feels better that that person went through that type of process and was selected as the number one candidate. So I think it's a two-way street, and I think sometimes, I know in my experience been, uh, typically in, in searches of this nature, of this, of this importance, um, interviewing at least three candidates is not an excessive amount of effort on our part. One of the most important things we do.
Lori, uh, I was just looking through, and William made the comment about a diverse process, and I was just scrolling through here, I don't think any information's on here that tells you anything about race, is there?
That's right. It, there's not, and that, that's, um, on purpose.
Okay.
So, we, and we followed the same process, we gathered the applications and resumes using the same process that all other state employees use. So they applied through my purpose, um, entered the information, it does not ask anything about race. And we actually redacted birthdate information even.
Okay, so William, I guess that's, uh, I didn't think that was in there, so, you know, we use the state application process, and so this is a completely blind process, we have no idea what race any of these people are, unless we know them. Um, and we don't know the vast majority, so I, I don't know how you, uh, assure a diverse- uh assure a diverse process when you have no idea what someone's race is to begin with.
Well, I think we need to have a process somehow to make sure that we do assure it. I don't know how we do it, but I think we need to make sure that we assure that we do have a process that assures that we do have a diverse pool. And if we don't have, if we can't do that, we need to figure a way how we can do that, in my opinion.
I mean, short of asking someone, which I don't know, the state doesn't ask race on applications, right Lori?
That's correct, and that is so that there can't be discrimination.
Right, so we would have to go back and ask these people, which is contrary to how the state does hiring. I I don't know. I I don't know how you do it.
Like I don't, I don't either. I'm the all I know is that I everybody of all the companies and the organizations that I'm involved in are making sure that we have diverse pools, and I would just hope that we would do the same. Like I said, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a genius. I don't know how we can do it, but I just need to make, I think that that's important, that we should try to make sure that we do that.
Jerry, would you want to make any comments at this juncture? Uh about the process uh that you would advocate for?
Yeah, thi- this is a conversations give me a lot to think about, but they uh I I think the I I I still like the way we did with uh Mr. Owens. Uh that there were, there were some questions that uh he was asked uh that I don't think that anyone was prepared for, but it was based more on some of his responses. Uh if we submit questions prior to the interview, if a question comes up during it, then if uh then you may not get, you know, if you're not part of the committee, you don't get to ask that clarifying question. No, yeah, I just thought it worked really well for C at the time.
Betty and Jerry, do you do you recall where all those interviews, and I thought there were four, not three, but anyway, uh were some of them in person and some of them by video?
We had two in two in person and and uh two on uh video, and you're right, there were four in the final.
There were four.
Yeah, my 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 sense in our conversation, in this group's conversation earlier, is that that doesn't put everybody in a level playing field. If two are in person and two are by video.
Um I I don't remember sensing any problem with that at all. And and again, this would be an issue that would strictly be up to this board, whether you wanna interview in person or uh via Zoom. My question for Jerry is, do you like having three candidates come to the board for um additional interviews before the subcommittee makes a final recommendation?
Yeah, I I would think that would be the, what I think would be the most clarifying for the board members. Uh you know, the reason that uh we you know, we were still, we were doing hybrid meetings at the time, or not even hybrid, we were meeting in person at the time. We weren't even doing Zoom. Uh is and the reason that they did the two Zoom sessions with the candidates was because of the distance they would have to travel. Cause they were all uh uh one was in Texas and I can't remember where the other one was. But it would uh necessitate a very uh expensive way to do it, uh cause you know, this is pre-COVID. And as a result, you know, we we weren't even doing hybrids. We just, it was a a total cost factor involved with the interviews. So uh I I think the ideal of having the a total Zoom interview is uh appropriate in today's lifestyle. You know, this was, that was something that didn't really occur uh before that because of uh COVID.
Right, you get into that notion of is it worth two days' worth of travel time for a thirty-minute interview? Uh and I think you have to weigh those factors. I I don't remember receiving any feedback from the candidates who did attend by Zoom uh that they felt slighted. Now, what the subcommittee has recommended is that initially all candidates would be interviewed via Zoom. So that puts everybody on equal footing uh at the beginning, and then we can adjust the process as we go forward with a smaller group of candidates. So I'll.
You threw out thirty minutes.
Yield over to Dr. Hackburg.
Okay, sorry. Maybe to move the process forward, I would, if it's okay, I would make a motion that the candidates be interviewed by Zoom by the committee. And that they recommend three individuals to the full board and that we interview those individuals in person. And provide our recommendations back to the committee to produce a final recommendation.
I'll second it.
Uh I'd like to make an amendment to it, and that is that we would provide the three resumes and just in case it is totally uh clear that the that we don't have to go further, but that the decision be made by all eight at that point, you know, that we say, okay, here's the three. Our first, the committee's first is Bill O'Meara. Now, he's not a candidate, but there there there's somebody we mentioned. And you all look at, everybody looks at it, so we totally agree. Then it's not necessary, but that way um I it just gives us an option rather than have it in the uh uh resolution, but that's just an amendment uh idea. And it appears there's not a second.
Uh Dr. Hackburg, does your motion include the other six steps that are outlined in uh Bill's memo to the board? We've got four on the screen. Share if you could move over to those other two. So what we're doing, I think, is um modifying number six.
That can be accepted as a friendly amendment, yes.
Uh, thank you.
Well, I I just wanna make a clarification. Uh you mentioned that um that the committee would interview all candidates by Zoom, and in the proposal, we're saying all first interviews by Zoom, and the committee decide how, what format uh to go, any additional interviews?
The the first interviews by the committee would be by Zoom. The in-person candidate interviews would only be the top three with the committee, full board.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Dr. Hackburg, you still got your hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll put it down.
Was there a second or did I miss it?
I had seconded it.
Okay. All right, uh Bill, you wanna move to discussion?
Yes, any further discussion on on Dr. Hackburg's motion?
Bill, what can you make sure I understand the motion? Is that well, the the last three will be interviewed by the full board now? Is that what it's saying?
Yes, uh uh I if I understand the motion, it's uh the committee has uh the authority to do initial interviews by Zoom. Uh and then bring three finalists recommended to the board where the board will do in-person interviews.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but I still wanna know the demographic, I wanna know with the makeup of the twenty-nine, and I wanna know how we get to the three. I still wanna, I wanna get that information before I go into this three.
Right, I think I think that was the friendly amendment that Lynn was proposing. So um I don't think we can go back to that point. Do you wanna make that uh amendment, uh William?
Yes.
Okay, I I'd, William, I can tell you as part of this what I did. Uh I looked at criteria and weighted each candidate by criteria. Uh and interestingly enough, when we finally got to looking at it, we all, I mean, we all did it independent and we basically all ended up with the same cr- curve. Independently.
Got it.
All right, we have an amendment from William. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Keith, do you go from here or do I keep going?
No, you can keep going. I'm I'm um I'm, I just want clarification. What was that last men- uh amendment? What what does that require?
Uh yeah, I have a question about that. Uh uh Mr. Summers, are you talking about determining whether or not we have a diverse group of candidates?
I I with the twenty-nine, I wanna see those, and then I wanna see once we, when we get to the three. So if I wanna discuss about how we got to that, I wanna have that in, I wanna know, I wanna know and understand the twenty-nine and how we got to the three before I am responsible for interviewing the three.
So William, if uh as your technical advisory, what you're, if I understand what you're suggesting, we have to go back to the twenty-nine and ask all of them certain questions about ethnicity or whatever.
I mean, I don't, you know, if we haven't done that, if we may not have that information, I'm just wanting to see, I just wanna see those. And if I have questions that we can, I can ask. If we don't know, we we don't know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know. We're not allowed to ask. Uh
Right.
And 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 Lori pointed out age as well. We are not allowed to ask about age. You know, we're trying to prevent, prevent discrimination, that.
Right, but if we see we don't have a diverse pool, maybe we need to go back and see, you know, hey, what can we do to 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 make sure that we do have one? That and I'm not gonna be in, I'm not gonna see these individuals, I talk to any of these individuals, and I just want to 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 be able to know what with the uh from the twenty-nine.
Well, we're not gonna know that. We don't have that information. I guess that's my point.
But I'm, when you talk to them, you will know afterwards, you will, as we, when we narrow it down to three, we will know.
But we're only interviewing, we're not interviewing twenty-nine. We've already called that group down.
Well, and and here's the other thing. I mean, if if once we, let's say we interview twelve people, and if we realize we don't have any minorities, how would we go back, considering we don't know the race of anyone? How on earth would we go back to the list of twenty-nine and find a minority? We we don't know where they are. We don't have that information. That's the point. I mean, I I understand, I get it, and I I know what you're trying to do, but in in this case, we use the state hiring system to do this, and you don't ask race. And frankly, you don't ask sex. I mean, the you, that's not on there either. We have no idea other than if they have a traditional name, we can make an assumption, but you know what? That may not be correct either, once we do the interviews. We don't know.
And I and I totally, I understand what you're saying, but all I'm saying is that then there are, there are, I guess there are firms, there are organizations that if you're trying to get a diverse pool, can help you do that without having to do some of the things that we can't do. So I'm just hoping that, you know, like I said, I I think it's important for us to have a diverse pool, and I think it's uh important for us to intentionally uh try to make sure that we do. So that means that we may have to do some things that we haven't done in the past to intentionally try to make sure we do within the framework that we have.
William, to do that at this point, we'd have to stop and start over and hire a executive search firm. And we voted not to do an executive search firm.
Yeah, and the board, the board already voted to not do that. Um and and here's the thing, we spent about four thousand dollars. Am I correct on that number, Lori, in advertising this this job? And we advertised it with how many outlets?
Um several. Um and I will say, uh most of the candidates that did apply, because there is a spot on the application for them to tell us how they heard about it. Um I know some did uh see the ad and pensions and investments and some of those other uh sites that we advertised, because they told me that when they contacted me. But the majority, or a big group anyway, of the folks that applied saw it on LinkedIn.
Yeah.
So you know, it was on that public site, uh and it was, it was just pushed out, so I think it did get in front of a lot of different people.
Well, yeah.
And if we take applications after the cutoff date, we'd have the question of why some candidates are allowed to apply later than others.
What from from, this is a, this is a learning experience for me, so from from now on, if if this is what we have to do, then it may be best for us to always get a a firm. So we can try to make sure that we do that, cause it seems like if when we do it by ourselves, we're not able to really ensure that. And I think that we should want to, and I think that we should ensure that. So now knowing more what I know back, I may have, now I think, you know, hey, next time we may need a firm, cause where there may not be a way for us to ensure that we have a diverse pool, otherwise, is what what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and and look, that's fine. That the, I think one of the big things about the firm was, the last time the board hired a firm, which was in twenty fourteen or fifteen, it was quite literally wasted money, because they came up with no candidates willing to take the job. Um and it was, uh I think the estimate, if I'm correct on this, Dave, was between sixty-six and eighty-eight thousand dollars this last time?
Yes.
Uh with no guarantee of any results. So I mean, you know, again, but we we discussed this in a public meeting and had a vote.
Right, no doubt, but I I, like I said, I didn't know that the process, like I said, the the what this issue, to make sure that we have a diverse pool, that's gonna be, I'm I'm very sensitive to that. And I'm looking, because like I said, Keith, this this state and everything set up, it wasn't set up for it, for people of color to have opportunities, and I wanna make sure that we're doing that, so that I'm sensitive to that. And so I'm, if if the only way we can do that is to have a a a firm outside, then that's the way I'm gonna say we need to do it from now, because from what I'm hearing now, we can't ensure that that we do that. We can't ensure that, and I think that that's important.
William, are there any membership organizations, uh magazines, anything like that, that you would recommend that we advertise in? That wouldn't be covered by the broader things like the investor investors, the organization of pensions and LinkedIn?
I mean, I I would have to, you know, I I think that there probably are some publications that we should be doing that, and I'm happy to reach out to the network to kinda see what we are, where we should, but I will, I will definitely do that, can do that.
I think, I think that would really help us, and and we can give that to Lori that would help us going forward. Uh I I kind of agree with what Peter, what uh Keith said. For us to be able to do this now, we'd have to start from the beginning.
Right, and I I don't want us to start from the beginning, but now understanding the process, I, this is something that I think is important. So uh I'll I'll know that, you know, hey, from the beginning, if we are not having a firm, can we still ensure this? Because I think we need to ensure that with any hire that we make going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's, it's, it's been a while here, Bill. Let me uh, let's just clarify something here before we go forward. We have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion is uh to basically let the Executive Director Search Committee handle this all the way down till the final three candidates, and then the final three candidates are brought to the full board to be interviewed in person. Is that correct?
The only correction, I believe, was that the the committee can only do Zoom interviews, is what I understood.
Right, yeah, yeah, and that's, and that's fine. Okay, all right. So tho- those are, that's the motion on the table, and then we had two different amendments. Um and I don't remember what those were.
I believe one was that prior to um the committee coming up with the final three, that that all twenty-nine viable candidates would be distributed to the, um, entire board for, for their review, and that we would have a meeting, a closed session meeting, to discuss the final three bef- before the committee does their interviews. I believe I've summarized those correctly.
Okay, so I guess my question would be if, if the motion gives the Executive Director Search Committee the authority to whittle it down to three, what would be the purpose of then going back and saying, and, oh, by the way, here's the other twenty-six candidates? Uh, I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand what that accomplishes.
Well, I believe William was wanting to, to review our, our pool and see how, uh, diverse it was, and, and I believe there was extended conversation that that, uh, was limited.
Well, I, I don't think it's limited. I think it's nonexistent. So I, I, I think that goes back to the question now, what, what would be the purpose at this point? Since we know there's no way to ensure diversity, because we don't know what the race or the sex of these people are, what, what would be the purpose of, at that point, going back and revisiting all twenty-nine applications?
That, that would be up to the, the other members of the committee on whether they want to take the time to review those twenty-nine and make comments to the committee.
Was there a second for either of the amendments?
Uh, I don't think so.
No.
No, I think I did second Bill, Williams.
Oh, excuse me.
And I, I thought what he was saying is, I just wanna see who they are, and.
Look here, I'm not trying to make this process difficult. I'm just saying that we need to try to make sure that we have a diverse pool, and that we need to make sure that our process allows for that too. Cause if it doesn't, man, we could get beat up on that. So that's all that I'm saying. If, if everybody's comfortable knowing that, hey, we, we can't, we don't know whether we're gonna have a diverse pool. We don't know i- if that, and if we comfortable with that, that's fine. I'm not comfortable with that, because I think that that's not what we should do. But that's just my opinion, and if we comfortable with that, we can move forward.
I, I would suggest that when we advertised, we had a very broad national, uh, reach, um, because the, there were two or three organizations that were national, uh, in just their nature. Um, the, uh, uh, pension and investment publication, um, goes to everyone in the industry. Um, and LinkedIn is a very, um, broad, uh, organization that, so I think the opportunity was there for everybody who thought they were qualified, uh, based on the, the professional, uh, criteria. Everyone who thought they, uh, met those criteria had the ability to apply.
But, you know, that's true, but I, I get what William's saying. Uh, you know, this is Kentucky, and is the door open in Kentucky for diverse groups? If we advertised in, um, you know, the, um, uh, you know, the, the Black, Black Bankers Association or something like that, that would be very clear that it was open. Uh, but that's why I'm saying if we can learn some of this, this thing's go- going forward, um, I think I would be, I would be comfortable knowing that going forward, we're gonna make a bigger, a, a, a better effort. Did, William, does that kind of get to what you're thinking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Vicky, do we need to vote on the amendment?
Uh, if you're comfortable, William, I'll take away my second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, we can't do it. So, yeah, I mean, it's, but I just want everybody to know where, look, man, as we thinking about this and as we going forward, man, I just think that hopefully this, it doesn't, if I'm not in the room, somebody still thinks about it.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, so that amendment is now gone.
Correct, it's been withdrawn.
Okay, all right, so we have a first and a second, and then, uh, any more discussion? All right, Bill, you wanna call a roll?
Well, I, I'll let Sherri do that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Dr. Hackford?
Yes.
Ms. Hampton?
Yes, with education for the future.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Ms. Pendergrass?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
And Mr. Summers?
Look here, y'all don't need me to vote yes on this. This is gonna pass. I'm gonna vote no, because I wanna make sure, I don't know where, where we sent this out, what publications we used, and I wanna make sure that, you know, in the future, look here, man, we gotta make sure, we gotta do intentionally and make sure that this is, we, we know that people of color and everybody had access to this, and, and it, and it was a good pool. So I'm gonna vote no for that reason, knowing that it won't stop it from moving forward. But I want that to be documented, so as we do things in the future, I think that that's important that we do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so what, what am I, six to one, six yes, one no, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and that motion carries. Bill, anything else from the Executive Director Search Committee?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Okay, we have no need for a closed session, so this, uh, concludes our agenda. So I'm gonna adjourn today's meeting. Thanks to everyone for your attendance and the discussion, and we'll, uh, see you next time.